And now I make a motion to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing for the proposed Bear Creek shooting.
Second.
All in favor? Andy.
Basically, what we're here for today is to get public opinion on the shooting range proposed at the Bear Creek site. I have a flat, a small one this letter size of the site. I think most everyone knows where it's at. It's worth a bad review up there on the right-hand side of the road before you get into the entry of the bear. The purpose of the public meeting is to find basically, one is to hear public opinion on the site and the location itself. Secondly, from that, what is good or bad from the public's opinion of us going forward. And we can use this meeting as a means by which to obtain grants from the NRA to help us with the money that would be there for the shooting range. The commissioners, I think, have already set aside some funds for the shooting range. We'd like to take that, use it as our max work against the more money from the NRA to make it as nice as possible. I guess with that, I'll open up for questions. I'm sorry if there are comments.
We've got a sign-in sheet.
Get it.
Andy, please, your first up. Thank you to the law enforcement on the DCO.
Andy, before we get started on this, commissioners has already have discussed about the Bear Creek Church and not having shooting during time services and things like that.
Well, I'd like to thank the commissioners, first of all, for doing this endeavor. I'm kind of speaking from about three different positions that I do that involve shootings and stuff like that. One, I'm a firearms dealer and I get calls all the time of people looking for a range to shoot. People have drove up to my house from Georgia saying, hey, is this a shooting range? And I've let them shoot my back pasture. So it's a need that we need there. Also, I do the concealed carry classes. I do a lot of those and have a place to shoot for people to practice with. I hear a lot of feedback with that. But probably the biggest reason that I would push for this or in favor of this range is I'm also the high school, middle school shooting sports team coach. We have about 50 kids starting from sixth grade on up. Last year, we actually had some fifth graders in school. And it's a multi-discipline sport. It's rifling, shotgun, archery, and then hunter skills, which is land navigation, and also animal recognition and the laws as far as hunter safety goes. Currently, we practice at the site office pizza. Years ago, they used to practice up at the range on Atoa Ever because the US Forest Service will write you a ticket if you're up at the Atoa range shooting skeet or archery. It's fire alarms only up there, not with a pistol. The problem with being up there is if you're up there doing pistol, people can't shoot rifle because the pistol range is downrange. So the site you guys have offered up there, there's a lot of room there. There's a lot of space to do a bunch of different disciplines. I understand the concerns with noise, and I agree there shouldn't be any shooting on Sunday until maybe after church or something like that. As far as the shooting teams concerned, we really run a little bit in the fall and then we hit it hard like in January, February, March, and then we're done. We went to Saturday on the practice because it gets dark so early. But when in August, September, October, November, we do shoot in the evenings, like two evenings a week, we'll be up there shooting. But we do try to keep it friendly to neighbors and quit at dark. Currently, where we're shooting at now, there's four houses directly above where we're shooting at. We're shooting into a rock pile and with 20 feet of gear reach shots. It's not safe where we're at now, but it's the safest place we've got, I guess, that we have access to. So we got, the kids are, they work hard. The parents work hard trying to raise money for the kids. We're not supported by the school really at all. It's all self-funded. We go out and raise money. Darren Jenkins, he's kind of our big money raiser and in the NRA helps fund and get the hammer for it this year, but gives $10,000 for ammunition and stuff for it. If it wasn't for that, I think we could have missed it. Any questions?
Probably, Andy. I appreciate what you've said with kids, but I understand that Forest Service closed the range period.
Oh, they did?
Yeah. Somebody left a box up there and they showed it back and nobody came near there or something.
Yeah. Well, I keep my comments myself about Forest Service.
Well, Charlie Grantstaff worked hard and a lot of us had turkey shoots, repared the sheds and stuff, you know. People should clean up, but most of the time, the next person comes up or does clean it. I think they've done the chanting injustice by not letting them use it that range and even as far as space to use.
Yeah, it's tough. It's tough because, I mean, this program, and I don't want to get into names and stuff, but now this program, I saw last year as a coach, it made a difference in one kid's life. It was probably the only staple thing that kid had in its life. And it was worth everything I put into it just to know that you have that one kid. The thing about this program is we stress safety, we stress ethics, not only in home, but any kind of sports outdoor activities and stuff like that. So I think it's a good thing that, you know, we never had this opportunity when I was a school. It's a good opportunity, I think, to see it go to waste. And there's very few schools in the state that are actually off of this program. And when we go to our state competitions, it's dominated by the Western Children's State. District nine really cleans up the state.
With the state of the land, our biggest concern is the church and, you know.
Well, we want to be good neighbors. I mean, that's, I think all sports want to be good neighbors.
If the gate was closed, you'd know not to go. People know not to go and they might be having revival or something, you know. But I don't think there was shooting, I'm saying.
And that's fine with me. I mean, the shooting team's not the, you know, whatever.
Well, I think, you know, they don't take too many out to, I'm saying. And the church ain't closed. I think that's their biggest concern. Not nothing by R and D is good. But I do appreciate what you do and all the rest for the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Randy, who's there?
Andy, who's there?
Joe? No, I'm sorry, no, thanks. I skipped Randy. You have, I apologize. Same Randy, Randy, tell I had people. Come on, everybody close. I'm sorry. This is my Randy, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, gosh, all you people, I know all you and I support Grand Canyon shooting law, but I've gone to your booth and we've had fun, which is a good one for that purpose. But I'm here on behalf of the Bear Creek Homeowners Association. I've had a lot of calls today, a lot of emails, people have come by my house, homeowners. And then I had also one of the evenings, Matt's church came by, Casey Nichols, and asked me to speak here on their behalf that they oppose this. It's a bad idea. Church is too close. There's due to safety and noise both. And Casey, he came by just a couple hours ago. The other thing is, I want to ask, I'm really not sure what this proposal is, if it's for a public shooting range or just for the shooting club. So that would be, make a difference, but what Casey said, you know, they have Bible school, funerals, weddings, Wednesday night church, Sunday services, and a lot of times they go in the afternoon with meals and different things. But the other thing, another point that I'm really not aware of that they told the range to be closed.
It started this week.
Well, I know people that were up there two weeks ago shooting, and I know it came out in the paper a year ago, I think, or less, but to my knowledge, that range has never been closed.
We qualified three or four weeks ago, ninety things are. And then after that, they tell me that somebody left trash and stuff up there and they shut the whole thing down.
Well, they may have. It has been shut down periodically, so I can go back a little bit because of trash and damage and vandalism. And, but I wonder if you have proposed or talked to the Forest Service about getting a permit to manage, maintain, and improve that range up there? Because when it was built, like you said, Mr. Grantstaff, he passed away soon after that. He had a good organization in the agreement. The Forest Service name, you know, was at this club would help manage and clean it and all. And then he passed away and the group never got back together. So it's been, it's been difficult to manage. Time, time the county has gone up a lot and cleaned up and, I know, a lot of other people have. But that's an option to me to even possibly expand that. And I don't know if you've looked at that or not, but that place up there is safe. It's enclosed, cold. The one across from Bear Creek, there's enough, there's no barriers or anything between there and the highway. It's a short distance. There's nothing between theirs and church, which is, I would say, no more than maximum of a thousand feet away. And also, it's very risky. And once you establish a shooting range, it automatically becomes a hazardous waste site. You can't do anything else with that land without a lot of money invested to clean it up, of the way. There's, and I don't know how well this has been studied or planned or, and I'll certainly get a grant from the NRA because there's one built over Cherokee County. That's a one-time thing. You get the money, you build it, but I don't know where the money's going to come from to maintain, to manage it, and to run it. It's not easy running a gun range. It's expensive and there, and I know with the people, there are so many people in that area that have homes there. There's going to be a lot of complaints. I mean, a lot of complaints. They're not only going to be the points, but I know our homeowners association, we're going, we'll be asking for some tax really for these people causing lower taxes or values, or home values, the noise. If it's a public range open six days a week, there's going to be a lot of noise up there. And it's going to be right up that valley, bounces off those bridges, and I don't understand if shooting or neighborhood anyway, where you hear it's loud. And there will be a lot of complaints. There may even, I have, I'm the president of the Bear Creek Junction Homeowners Association and I've been asked to come, but we may even take legal action. It's just a bad idea. It's a bad entrance. You can't get in and out of that entrance without nearly getting run over. You have about 30-foot sight distance there. It's an awful place pulling in and out. And I imagine you're probably looking at different traffic paths or something, but there's not a bottom roof. That's a dangerous place, even like I say. There's only one direction to safety shooting, and that's right directly at the mountain. Now, who's going to be there all the time in the manning zone to make sure that people are doing the right thing? I don't know if the county's got the money to do that or what, but I guess I could go on and on. Like I say, I support the hunting and I'll try, I'll work with you if I can help you find another site. I know you need a place to shoot and get to do this, a good thing. That place right there, there on the highway, Bear Creek, is just a bad location, a bad site. And like I say, once you do it, you've got lead in there that you'll have to deal with it now if you ever want to do anything else with that site. It's, I just wish the county would come up with someone else. And so I'm obviously not in support of the shooting range at this site. So, do you have any questions?
Do you know any way to get the Forest Service to let our shooting team shoot skeet and bows on the shooting range at Atoa? We did for years and apparently when Jimbo Reiner was the ranger here, the officer here, he didn't have a problem with it. Sam Rippon didn't have a problem with it, but apparently Rick Franklin does, because always come about after he was our law enforcement officer over here.
Well, I know initially, it's always against their rules, regulations to shoot skeet because it's a problem to pick up, just accumulation and all of it. But one thing that the Forest Service, I think, would be, they would love to get that off their hands if the county could take over managing it and even expand it. You could get a, sign a long-term permit, I would think. I hope they would be open to discussing that as far as if the county would help pick up, maintain, and manage the site. I think they'd be open to talk about a permit. And I'd help with that if I could be able to get it.
I know that there's been state and federal politicians calling trying to get it okay before they could shoot up there and it ain't went nowhere.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, I don't have a full area anymore, but I do know how they work and I'd be willing to help out as far as talking with them, helping out, just like who to contact, how to speak their language and all that. But I know when I was running here, I would love the county to take over that and manage it. And personally, I wouldn't have a problem with the skeet if we had some help picking it up and cleaning it up. I'd have no problem with expanding it because I know you can't shoot pistol and rifle same time. And I mean, it needs, it needs some improvement and work. That thing was built in, I guess, 1982, I believe, about a year or so, year or two after I got here. But.
We need to go back and see why the range is closed because the Forest Service has got money from Fish and Wildlife to expand that, but there has to do with no intention. And this is just recently they have continued of expanding it for where there would be any bow or any skeet.
Yeah.
They have a grant from Fish and Wildlife for some funding to expand the Atoa range, but not to do what, what's being asked of the county here at the Bear Creek.
So you've talked to them?
But I'd be more, you know, willing to go back and talk some more, but I think there's some, some issues that go along with expanding that range, if you're willing to do it. Because the NRA and the Fish and Wildlife both were involved and tried to expand that Atoa range and it was, it didn't go anywhere.
Yes, and like I say, I know I've been a part of getting these grants from the NRA. That's one, they give you the money to build it. They don't give you anything to maintain or to manage or keep it up or deal with it after you got it. So, you know, I, so you, as the county, take part in owning, managing, and owning a gun range. You're talking about a long-range endeavor that's going to cost money and time and manpower. And also, you're going to deal with a lot of complaints because a lot of people in Upper Tolu really think it's going to affect their land values and home values. And I went up, but been opposite, and I've talked about it, talked more than one person, two Bear Creek churches. They don't like it at all. I'm surprised some of you that are here. Casey said he couldn't like it and asked me to speak with his behalf.
We've got some letters from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of North Carolina Law and Order Extension and 4H Program. And I heard problems, thank the commission board for even considering providing some help here as a shooting range. Do you think we need more somewhere? Absolutely. And we have a 4H, have a shooting program, most of our high schools live, and we work hand in hand together. Andy's been a great walkover with us and we share a lot of things and do a lot of things back and forth. We do, or in our area, we do through a grant, we give the shells and targets and supplies and things like that. So we, we do share, you know, send one, we're in dire need of a shooting range somewhere here. Now, being a pastor myself, I do everything in church's position, I'm, it's absolutely, don't have a problem with that at all. I do understand what we're coming from. I do want to share some, a little bit of statistics from our program and kind of let you know how important it is. Thus far, we have about 20, 20 members on our team. And some of those are actually on the high school team as well, and they go back and forth. Thus far, we've done about 920 hours of education work as it relates to the shooting program, whether it's been practiced or bookwork, or we also stress safety and things like that. We practice five days a week or sometime during the week. Out of the 20 members, we've had 10 that's qualified to go on the district, the district program. At district nine, 10 got qualified to go on with the state program. At state, four of them got invitations to attend the national competition in Nebraska. So the program's been really good and it's really helping kids from a personal standpoint. It teaches kids a little bit of discipline, a little bit of respect, certainly respect for a violent, we live in a world where the people need to learn something today for dealing with tools like that. And it's really seen a change in kids. And so I think, you know, it's an important thing, we definitely a safe place for these kids to practice somewhere. Any questions for me? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Come ahead.
Thank you. I'm in property for our family, owner of the mansion and developer, Bear Creek Junction. I would like to say I'm in, I'm in favor of a gun range, but not except the location that you have designated. Number one, it is, it is, property is right adjacent to the public dump or disposal there. And if I was going up there and I was going on what's going on and hearing all the fires going on, it'd scare me to death. So I think that should be taken into consideration. And also, the location on Highway 129, the property abuts the highway, and it's right on the, almost a blind corner. If I was coming in time and heard all that ammunition going off, it would scare the dick out of me and maybe even cause an accident if I was caught unaware. And the entrance to the property is on a blind corner for immigrants and immigrants. And I think that'd be a detriment. And, and the noise factor from Bear Creek Junction in itself, I think it'd be a deterrent to knock down the values of the property. If I was a prospective buyer, I wouldn't want to have to listen to the, all the ammunition invasion fire. And what I understand is going to be open, proposed to be open seven days a week. That'd be a very big deterrent, especially like it's been mentioned, the Bear Creek Church and all the residents of Bear Creek Junction, which is probably, I hate to rank it, but it's up on the top of the list of developments. It's, all the properties are well-maintained and the value is up there, so I think that's just some of the considerations to be taken. Thank you.
Thank you, boss. Is no one else on this? Anybody else got anything they want to say before we close the session?
Chairman? And would please be allowed to, we had calls come into the county office today asking because we're unable to be present today, if we would read statements from them. And I'd like to go ahead and bring this without what I'm about to do, is this no reflection on the county in one way or the other. We're doing this as a service to the votes that called to the office, asking that they have your input in this meeting tonight. First of all, we have a letter from Mr. John Freyler, and I'm going to read it as it's been presented to us. "On behalf of the church and the residents that live at Bear Creek and the veteran that goes out of his mind when he hears gunfire, he feels that the county is putting lives in jeopardy. Not only are you putting everyone in the church in jeopardy, you are putting lives in jeopardy due to the dangerous curve where you pull in. People's lives are at stake and this road will not take the extra traffic. Even where the dumpsters are located, it's very dangerous. People that live there are in jeopardy and he doesn't want to see a helicopter picking up dead bodies. He asks that the county give this more consideration and think about the safety of the people on the road. He stated that he realizes that the school needs a place to shoot and he is not opposed to a gun range just the location. He stated that the road is used by several semi-trucks and not everyone pays attention when pulling out, and this could wipe out an entire family for the sake of guns. He stated that he was, he's been a business owner and safety was the number one priority. He said that he understands that the range would be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and this is not fair to the church, which now serves daycare. And further stated that maybe the time could be limited to certain hours on certain days. He asked that the board give more consideration to the proposed location. He further stated that he carries a gun and is licensed to do so, but the board needs to justify where the range is located. He stated again that this is being proposed in the wrong place and this needed to be justified." That was Mr. John Freyler's comments. A letter to the heart of the record here tonight from Mr. Mark Norrell. "First of all, I'd like to apologize for not being able to attend the commission meeting this evening, but I was aware and unaware until yesterday that it was being held today. I've resided in Bear Creek Junction for almost two years now, and this is the first time ever hearing about a proposed shooting range in our area. I feel that it's the commissioner's duty to inform the area residents of the proposed range before making this vote tonight. I think more research and information needs to be put out to the residents that will be impacted before making a final decision. I'm an advocate of the second amendment rights to bear arms. In saying that, I and many other residents in Bear Creek Junction are very concerned about the problems that a shooting range will impose on our community. As a retired firearms instructor, I'm very aware of the noise that accompanies a shooting range. Where the range is currently located, shots can be heard inside the library. It will be even more unsettling to hear in your home and neighborhood while your young children are playing outside. I'm very concerned for the safety of our great county's city residents that will be going to the dump that is adjacent to the proposed shooting range. Another major issue prominent in shooting ranges is lead poisoning. Lead poisoning was so bad at the range where I was an instructor that they were afraid of it contaminating the drinking water and the dirt had to be removed and properly disposed of it. This site could cause a major problem for a number of well access by public, by the public and located at Bear Creek. There are no safe levels of lead poisoning. Once lead poisoning seeps into the ground, it makes the drinking water toxic for humans and animals and can even make fish and wildlife unsafe for human consumption. Also, if a shooting range is considered, I assume our property values will likely go down. It will affect our property values and could be something that we would need to disclose in case we decide to sell a real estate disclosure sheet later on. Who wants to move next to a shooting range? In closing, I reiterate the right to bear arms. I, another strongly feel that a more isolated place could be found that will not pose a noise problem for the residents and that can also be away from wells and vital water sources relied upon by many in and around the area. Thank you for your time and please vote no on the shooting range in Bear Creek. My sincere thanks, Mark Norrell." And one last one, I think this is a part very short, this is from Joe in Pagan, Capital. "Oppose the shooting ranges, do not want it." Thank you, Mr. Joe.
Thank you. Anybody else? I will say that we are aware of a lot of the issues. We knew there were places of opposition. We know that there's.
and that can also be away from wells and vital water sources relied on by many in and around the area. Thank you for your time and please vote no on the shooting range in Bear Creek. My sincere thanks, Martin Orle." And one last one from the pageant, this is very short. This is from Joe Peggy Kaplan. "Oppose the shooting range, do not want it." Thank you, Mr. Joe.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I will say that we are aware of a lot of the issues. We knew there would be some opposition. We know that there's pros and cons to the location. The intent was to meet the need of our youth, of our shooting teams. The Atoa site didn't do that. It wasn't sufficient. We, as a board, wanted to get away from the Forest Service regulation. It's cumbersome and we didn't want to have to deal with it. With that said, Bear Creek was the low-hanging fruit for us. We don't have a lot of acreage in our inventory as a county government. So that was, you know, naturally the first spot we looked at. I feel like we're still, there's still a lot of information that we've got to gather before we ever make a decision, in my opinion. But I do want to thank everybody for coming and we appreciate their input both ways.
Does anybody got anything?
Sounds like you've done a good job.
Just one thing, and very quickly. I know we've talked a lot about the site, but there hasn't been a lot of planning yet to that site. The entryway is where it's at now just because that's where it's always been. I want to clarify that. It does not mean that the entryway would actively, it's just a matter of getting a driveway working from the DOT to move that. So just wanted to clarify that on this information. And I think the commission are doing exactly what some of the letters ask. They're hearing from the public and then from that, they'll make the decision and move forward. And I appreciate you all being here too. It's just a step in the process of getting that money and that some of the public.
All right, I'll look for motion to close the public hearing if we have the regular lead. All right.